All right, everybody.
Good reason. Yes, there's things to do, places to be.
We're ready to go now. Call the special meeting of the Cumberland Town Council for Friday, June 13th, 2014, to order at 5:35. Everyone please rise as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge...
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Item three, new business resolutions, R. 1425, a resolution memorializing the General Assembly to enact legislation authorizing the town of Cumberland with the approval of the qualified electors to issue general obligation bonds and/or notes in an amount not to exceed $12,500,000 for the construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new public safety complex in the town. Mayor?
Yes, first, I want to thank council for accommodating this special meeting. I'm not, I'm trying to remember the last time that we had a special meeting. It might have been all the way back to 9/11 when the, when we had that tragedy in New York and we met on a Sunday afternoon in these chambers. But thank you so much for doing that. And I just want to give a quick explanation, very quick, of the reason why, so the public can understand that our intention was to be in front of the Town Council on, on the next meeting on Wednesday, as we've, we've said a few times already with a presentation that we're prepared to have tonight, because we've already prepared that in, in advance, or we have the agenda ready for Thursday. But I did get a call from Senator Pearson, who said that the, the General Assembly, instead of ending their session at the end of the month, planned to end it at the end of next week, which cuts us short by about five, five days to actually have the General Assembly act on these resolutions and in fact, they, that either, or both get passed. So what I, what we can do tonight, depending on how the council wants to, the, the presentation, I think that it's good for Brian to outline some of the finances and why the, it's timely to put this on the ballot. And then, of course, there'll be a future council and future administration that will determine the timing of that borrowing and the construction and in fact, the, the bonds approved in November if they are put on the ballot. And then the chief and Sean, the director, will, will be able to give you just whatever questions you have in terms of why, why we believe there's a need there. And then we'll take the, the road bond, you know, separate from the, this public safety bond. So I appreciate again the, the council accommodating. And I think that Brian, if you want to just give a financial overview and then we can have the, the directors and the chief give their presentation.
Good evening. On the $12.5 million public safety bond, the estimates that have been run, I've been working with the town's financial advisors for Southwest on this, how we're running it right now is to have debt service begin in fiscal year 2018 and for the first two years, fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019, paying only interest, interest only those two years. Then the following 10 years, we'll be doing principal and interest. It's being done as such so we can layer into the budget with little to no impact on the tax rate. We'll be having some more debt retire after the fiscal year 19, which will allow us to layer in both then the principal and interest payments with what again should be no, no significant impact anyway, or no impact on the tax rate.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Counselor Smith. So Brian, are you able at this point to, have you devised a schedule or something similar that shows what debt is being retired and what time to free up that payment?
Yes. I have, we have, I don't have it broken down, but I have it broken down by year. I don't, if you're, are you looking for which debt specifically is being retired? Or just how much each year?
Well, it's presented as a no tax increase proposition.
Yes.
So...
So for example, by fiscal year 2018, our debt, our total principal and interest payments would be a little over $5.8 million, whereas in our current year, the principal and interest payments total $6.6 million. So that reduction in over $800,000 is where we'll be able to layer in the, the payments for this bond.
All right, I did this quickly, but if we borrow, and perhaps my assumptions are off, but what are you using for an interest rate? What's the market rate today?
I believe, this was from, from Southwest, they went conservative, I believe they used five.
Five?
I believe.
I used 4% in mine.
Yes.
Borrowing $15 million over 20 years at 4% is, is roughly a million dollars in debt service.
Yeah, this was, this was, you were looking at, again, offer this, very conservative, then they go very conservative early on, because we wouldn't be borrowing this for some time, so they, they were going to go conservative. But we're basing it on principal and interest of 1.1 roughly a year.
Okay, so you're saying that by the time we issue the bond, we will have retired $1 million?
Yes.
In debt, which is equal to, I mean, excuse me, I'm not sure how much the debt is, but it will relieve ourselves of approximately a million dollars in...
Yes.
P and I payments?
Yes.
I, I need to look at that, it myself.
Okay.
What is the current bond rating? Trip away?
Bond rating, we have AA from S and P and A1, I believe, A1.
A1, yeah, one step away from AA on the...
Right.
And I think 5% is really high.
Yes.
I mean, it's probably even more like 2%.
This was, again, they went very conservative, just because we wouldn't be borrowing this for probably...
Well, yeah, assuming that we maintain the current bond rating, we're probably looking at, at most 3%.
Right.
Mayor?
And I would just, to answer Counselor Schmidt's, I give, it, this is dependent on, on the town having the discipline not to spend the retired debt service on other items. And it also gives the flexibility to, to layer in the timing, you wouldn't have to borrow the 15 million all at once, you could borrow the 12.5 and then the 2.5 could follow that, so you could follow the timing of the retiring of the debt service. So actually what Brian showed me the other day is even more favorable than I, than was outlined a few months back in terms of debt service that's going to get retired over the next four years. The debt is being retired at somewhere between $3.5 and $4 million a year...
Yes.
On principle. And the, the key is that the debt service is going to be down by about a million dollars, gross dollars, in that, approaching that 2018 year.
No, I understand, that's what I'm saying, I need to, I can see what the debt is from the annual audit and looking at our current financial statements, but I can't see from that is what the P and I is on each, on each thing. You've done that, what I'm asking is can you provide that to me or us?
Sure.
Because that's, that's key, I mean, number one.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. So if we could have the chief and, and director come up and just, for the record, at least prepare to answer any questions you have and give a short presentation, that would be, that would be at this time.
Keep in mind, Counselor, is that this is a resolution to put it on the ballot. It's not a resolution authorizing the building of it or anything related to that. And again, it will be dependent on pulling off a pretty tricky maneuver in the General Assembly in the next week. The Senate bill was introduced yesterday by Senator Pearson. There is no House bill at the current time. So, chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. Once again, on behalf of the Cumberland Police Department, I want to thank you for taking time out of your busy week and your busy day to be here at, at this time on, on Friday the 13th. I, I have been before the council previously.
You've been before the council?
Yes. I have spoken to you about the deficiencies. I've appeared before the Finance Subcommittee, speaking about the deficiencies of our police station, when it was built, back in 1960. Second floor addition was put on in 1989, and that was done not by a construction company, it was done by police officers and, and anybody who would, who'd come and lend a hand.
Because it looks like all the other buildings that were built around that time, before the addition.
That, that's correct. And, and I've laid out some risk management, some, what I consider serious risk management issues that, that we have been dealing with in our building. And fortunately, we've had, been successful in not having a, a claim filed against us. So I am not going to bore you with that. Director Thompson and myself put a small information packet that you have in your presence. I hope that you look at it. It does outline a lot of our issues that we are facing. We realize that they're, they're not going to get better. We're concerned that just by doing construction and trying to repair our buildings, it, it's only going to get worse. We feel that the time is here, the time is now. We are truly willing and looking forward to making this public safety complex a true complex for, for our citizens. Yes, we will be working in there, the police, fire, rescue, we will be working in that building, but we are constant, constantly mindful that it's going to be a true Cumberland community public safety complex. And with that being said, if you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
So the police station is 54 years old.
Yes, it is. And if you look in, we, we are nationally accredited.
The, at the time it was built, I know you probably don't know, but I venture a guess that we had 15 to 20 policemen. Are you familiar with any of that?
Somewhere around there. Times have changed.
We had no computer equipment whatsoever.
No, no computer equipment. The radio system was not what it is today. The, the staffing is not what it is today. So you could theoretically get by by having a station like that back in 1960. Technology has changed, methods of policing have changed, laws have changed, state and federal rules and regulations have changed, and I do not feel that we adequately...
Is there an elevator in the police station?
There, there is no elevator at the police station. We do not meet ADA compliance, current fire regulations. And, and once again, like I said, I have some severe, high-risk management issues that I'm facing with each and every day.
Counselor Murray?
Chief, when is your next accreditation period?
The, the next accreditation period, the assessment team will be here this December. The last time they were here, in their report, they wrote about the conditions of our police station, and I included that in that handout that you have. And that's a direct quote from the last accreditation assessment that we had back in December of 2010.
So you're telling, telling us then that the next accreditation, it could be, if they've already commented on it, things aren't getting better, that this could be a real problem facing accreditation the next time?
Yes, it could be, and, and I am on the border of not getting accredited because of the condition of our, our station today.
The, you know, I, I'm not concerned. I, I think we'd be very irresponsible if we don't get this out into the, into the ballot this fall. I've been through it and I don't know if every councilman has been through the police station and also the rescue, because we have a similar problem to rescue. And, and I would hope, you know, we have Rob McGlaughlin here, that he's going to help and support to get this through the House, because every delay is going to create another major problem for the town of Cumberland, in my opinion. And we've got to step up, and I would also add that I'm sure you'd be prepared, but once this gets on the ballot, that we've got to do a PR job to the taxpayers. I've had some very favorable comments about the new building, so I think it's, it's something that we all have to work together to get this thing done.
At the same time, we understand, Representative, that you're under certain constraints because of the timing. We, the time, the town did not anticipate that the General Assembly would be getting out so early in light of previous years, although I kind of relayed that it was possible to the mayor at least. We understand that you probably can't put the House bill in because of the timing. So all we need really is the Senate, one bill, we don't need two, but we do need assistance from the House delegation, because this is only a bond bill. It's not a fire district, redistricting, it's not anything... You're blocking the camera, why don't you come up? I'll come back in a minute.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, we will do our due diligence this week, to see if it's possible, you know, to get it, but what I would to think, bring into consideration is, there's also an extended moratorium on capital improvements. Are you aware of this?
Is this, are you talking about this, isn't that only school?
Uh, I don't know if it pertains to municipal buildings and schools.
We don't, we're not entitled to matching funds from the...
No, okay, then you're all right. But I think they extended it...
I think that's on housing for schools, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but we, we will do our, yeah, utmost to get it...
We understand that it will be tricky for leadership and it may require suspending rules, but if...
They've been suspended before.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Chief, were you done? Why don't you come back up? We just wanted to get that part over with. Since he just walked in, he may have somewhere to go.
Right.
So the rescue department is, how old?
It's called 1930, sir.
That makes it, what, 84 years old?
Eighty-four, yes, sir.
It was a school?
Yes.
Which, it wouldn't even suffice to be a school now.
That's correct.
Rescue building isn't dumb.
We do the best we can.
They have done what they can.
Right.
But it's been an issue going all the way back to Mayor Ewes' time, at least, that it became, the council became aware of the condition of it under previous directors. So, thought you can present what you want, but I think it's pretty common knowledge that it's insufficient.
No, I would, you know, I certainly would agree. You know, and in that space, while there have been some modifications to the building, you know, it's antiquated. And we've all grown it certainly in some areas. You know, I wouldn't want to, you know, take the time or, you know, perhaps waste money, you know, replacing the garage because it's inadequate, you know, as far as the drainage system is concerned, size is concerned. You know, this seems to be problematic all the way around. Some of the deficiencies are outlined in the packet that provided each, each member of the council this evening, or we've provided. And certainly, you know, when you got, when members of the council would like, if you'd like to give me a call and like to, to view the facility on the inside versus the outside, I'd be more than happy to help you out in that space, so.
I would say that, I don't think I've ever been in it.
Everything they say is true.
Yes.
I would say it's not true.
No.
No, I mean, there, you know, like I said, I mean, there have been some modifications in...
Not to, not to just, you know, not only the issues that you present...
Right.
But it's really not fair to the men either.
Correct.
And women.
Oh, and women, correct, thanks, Counselor. Now, I see there's a rendering of the, this is a conceptual rendering. Would you be sharing, you'd be sharing the building, would you be sharing the same space or would, would the rescue space be segregated?
Well, you can see in the, after the conceptual rendering, you know, which actually shows the exterior of the building, there are two floor plans, if you will, first floor and a second floor. The colors, the color code depicts what part of the building would be used by police, and the, I believe that would be in blue, and the orange would depict the colors that would be used by rescue in that space. So you can see that members of the staff would be on the, the first floor of the, of the building itself, and then administration would occupy the second floor of the building. There would also be offices on the second floor of the building for detectives, et cetera.
Okay. Did you have five, five rooms on the second floor? One looks rather large.
Yeah, I think in that space, I, right now, again, this is rendering, it's simply a rendering, it's a draft, you know, so, I mean, will it be tweaked? Absolutely. To define, redefine space. You know, in speaking with the folks over at Castle and Bost, they've been, they've been kind enough to help out and assist in, in providing us a floor plan consistent with the rendering that we had, that we had done with, with them.
Does anyone have any questions of the...
Mr. President?
Counselor Schmidt? The chief or the director?
Either, I'm not sure who to be addressed to, but one of these includes the fire, let me back up. My question is, has the fire department, fire district been consulted? Are they a part of this?
At this time, I mean, we have had a space needs, there was a space needs analysis that was performed by Castle and Bost that actually defined needs or space for the fire department. This rendering here unfortunately does not include them. The problem in that space is that we haven't, because they don't have anybody that we can speak to at this time to identify whether or not they can spend the money or allocate the money, and we'll, we'll know when they have a new board in November. At that time, we'll be more than happy to reengage in, in some of these discussions, you know, because again, we're in its, it's in its infancy.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any doubt, at least in my mind, that new facilities are required. I mean, I've been in your place and, and it's pretty bad, I've never been in yours, but from what I understand, it's just as bad.
It's worse. Counselor, go ahead.
But I have the question whether or not we should proceed with this without including the new Cumberland Fire District. The public safety building in, in my mind would encompass police, fire, and rescue. And if you're saying we can do that later, well, that might be, you know, would that add $5 million to the cost? I don't know.
Looks like...
Yeah, I, I can respond on that part of the time. It is appropriate when you look at that, it's an independent fire district, it's not municipal, so whatever, whatever, in fact, it wasn't just on, when you had the board to participate, and they saw value in that, the timing has gone around them to participate, they would have the power and authority to pay their portion of, in, in fact, that was something that is worked out collaboratively, or they would have the ability to borrow those dollars. I wouldn't be the town that would be borrowing that. So this, this would take care of the portion that has to do with what's under municipal leadership. And while I'm talking, sorry, I don't want to talk too much, but I do want to just go back to Brian's point, which, which I think has provided to you, that our borrowing capacity, we're, we're about maybe 30 to 35% on our borrowing capacity. So we have about $107 million, brands are about correct, of, of ability to borrow based on the municipal funding state, and we're, we're, we're coming down to about 30, 34 million or 35 million in that area.
Yes.
Yes, so there is capacity, but against the, Counselor's question, I, I think that it is appropriate, and certainly would be inappropriate for us to say to that new board that we would obligate them to any, for any borrowing, any funding, but we have had conversations with the chief and, and the director, with the fire chiefs that are currently there, to let them know that when the time comes, that they're more than welcome to participate in this conversation.
Well, would it make sense to delay the project until the new board is in place and work on it all from day one?
To me, no, because, you know, this is, what this body has the authority to manage, we don't have the authority, that, that's a wild card, we don't control, and we, you know, we, we've worked hard to lower our debt, to put us in this position to actually be able to do this without impacting property taxes, so this is the time, this is the time for the trigger, as I was concerned.
We've got a couple of points, is that this aren't, this referendum won't take place until November of this, this year. That will be in, co-align exactly with the establishment of the new fire board. And they will be taking office, my recollection, about 10 days after the election, something like that. So I don't think we're going to have, be at the stage, the planning stage at that time. So they would have every opportunity to participate if the new board chooses to do so.
And Mr. President, that, that overture has been made to the, to the, you know, the...
You know, it's probable that one of the two chiefs will be the fire chief. I mean...
But we have made that known, that we haven't, we delivered the message that if in fact, there was an interest to pursue that, that the town is more than interested in, in, in having those discussions.
I would note that it appears that the, the bays is certainly large enough in this conceptual design for fire trucks. There are also apparently two garages to the rear of the property. Do you know what that's for? Fight, police vehicles?
Sally, uh, sallyport for prisoners.
Oh, okay. You're going to take them inside in the car?
Security reasons and security purposes, yes. And the other one will be for processing evidence.
Okay.
Vehicles that have to be inside.
Can I ask the director of rescue, or is that your official title or do you have a new?
Director of Rescue Services is my title, sir.
Okay. I thought they changed it. How many rescues do we have?
President, we have, we have three, two frontline vehicles and then a spare vehicle.
So two are used on a regular basis?
On a regular basis, yes, sir.
And one is in Valley Falls?
One is in Valley Falls, personally.
Is there any plan to move that?
The plan would to be, the strategy, the deployment strategy, depending upon where the building would be located, would to potentially have them in the same building, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I've got one question. Counselor Curtis?
Given the condition of the police station in this other building, certainly the police station chief, would we raise the building and yield it to Goblin's activity? Or does it have any future purpose?
I think that's jumping the gun, but... I would assume that the building does have a purpose and...
Just not for police work.
That's correct. And whoever, you know, takes it, God bless them.
It'll be owned by the town. It's not in such disrepair as the rescue building. You know, it's maintained, it doesn't really have air conditioning.
Well, are you saying that we maintain our buildings better than the rescue?
No, I'm saying his building is, is 30 years older than yours. There are limitations of what you can do with it. They keep painting and painting and painting it, right?
Well, we, well, we have central air and...
They have better air conditioning than you, which is a serious concern with our...
And, and new windows. New windows and a heating plant.
If, if you look at that handout, some of the issue is our computers serviced.
Yeah.
It's being cooled down by a window, a window fan. And if you see on the bottom, our communications, it's in the garage behind chicken wire. That communications is for all town emergency services, police, fire, and rescue. So if something happens inside that garage, behind that chicken wire, we are totally down. So is fire, and so is rescue.
We have handheld units however, right?
Not without any technology.
Well, I'm just saying, it's obviously...
Our handheld units go to that major console that's in, in, in the basement.
Okay.
They hit the repeater and it goes back to our station for dispatch.
Mr. President?
Counselor Schmidt?
I've got several more questions, I'm not sure who they should be directed to, and some of these come from Councilor Landby, who couldn't be here tonight. But at a Finance Subcommittee meeting several months ago, there was a decision made to, the mayor was going to ask department heads for a list of the, well, the... made to, the mayor was going to ask department heads for a list of their, well, department heads for a list of their capital needs. Had that ever been done?
Mayor?
I had that, I had that conversation with Counselor Lambie and went over the list that I'm aware of, and we provide, I let him know that we would provide the new list, but there's not a, I can tell you, there's not a, a, a more serious need than, than what's in front of you tonight.
And these two departments are the only, other than the recreation department and the animal, would, would animal be moving to this facility? No?
No, they are not included.
There are no other departments that are located other than OCYO and the library outside this building, correct?
Yes, I mean, I'd be happy to go over them at any time, but I'd let Counselor Lambie know that I would provide the list that's not long because of what you've just said, Mr. President, is that there's not that many buildings, and the things that are on the agenda are very, where the parking lot at Diamond Hill, the parking lot at Tucker Field, and some issues on there on the recreation, but in terms of facilities, we know what's happening in the water department, and that's been very well informed. So there's nothing that we have not discussed that I'm aware of, that we haven't been in an ongoing conversation with this town council relative to capital improvements in town.
And again, I don't think, I don't know what Mr. Lambie thinks, but it's clear in my mind that this is a priority. My second question would be, are the amounts that you're asking for, this twelve-five, is that sufficient to do this? And I don't know who should answer that.
That would be the finance director or the mayor.
Well, in terms of the square footage that we're talking about in that twenty-five thousand square feet, which does include garage space, I believe that it is, but I also think timing's important, and Counselor, that this is something that, not only from the urgency that, that has been dispelled by, by our chief and director, that price sensitive issues and also interest rates, I would, I would think that you would want to act on it so that you would be in the ground. And then you would be guaranteed, obviously, if you wait five years, there's no guarantee, but I think if you get into the timeframe, it makes common sense that you are. We've visited South Kingston, which is very similar in terms of police station, and we visited Dalton and Seco, as we reported a few years back. So this is right in the range. It could be tight, but we also have other assets. You have the asset of the rescue building, you have the asset of the police station that potentially could get rolled into it, and you have the ability, which we have been very successful on, is, 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 is safety grants. We've, we've been very successful, that's how we did our dispatching in the, in the police station through, through, through a federal grant. So I would expect that the combination would be, would be in that ballpark.
Now, we, who did these floor plans?
This is Castle and Bost out of Foxborough, Mass.
Have we gotten any bids from any company with respect to what I told, safety complex we cost?
We, we have not.
My concern, or one of my concerns, is that we authorize twelve and a half million and it comes in at sixteen. How do we fund that?
We have another referendum.
What if it came in at something five, five hundred thousand dollars over, which is too little to float a bond?
Not really, but we can determine that at that time, if, if necessary, and also I would point out that you're limited by the amount set forth in the bond. So if it requires more money and there's none available out of either Shaw-Ploss, General Fund, or whatever, we'd have to go out to another bond.
And I, I do, I would say also that this is structured in such a way that it would have, as Brian said, very insignificant of any impact on the tax rate, so we're, we're outbacking the numbers, and but basically what we've seen, something in this, you could build, you know, you should be, you will be able to build a, a good building if you're all in today's, on today's dollars for that twelve and a half million.
What is the, what did you use for a square footage rate per square foot?
Four hundred dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars, or four hundred dollars, something like that. Wasn't in that range?
Yes, yes, yes.
Three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars per square foot?
Counselor Schmidt, proceed.
It's probably for Mr. Sylvia, what's the cost to underwrite these?
To what?
Underwrite the bonds. Load our agency charges.
They would be rolled into the debt service payments, but ballparking it, fifty thousand, between bond counsel and financial advisors and in the area of fifty thousand.
Not too, too much.
Very lucrative business.
I think I have gotten this one answered. The existing fire districts have not really been consulted, sort of. Because there is a new transitional committee, and I know they don't have a lot of authority, but-
I think that what they said was that the current chiefs were consulted.
Oh, the chiefs, okay.
There is no exist, there's no fire district in place that could be consulted.
Okay.
But I would expect that it would be, because they will be in place before the building is built.
Correct. I believe this is intended for a small portion of the monastery, correct?
And I, I think that's, I'm glad that the question's asked, that this, this vote is not site-specific. I think that that's a decision that's going to be made when, when you hire an architect from this council, this, our future council does that. I, I don't think there's any, we have not, you know, there certainly is a prime location today that would be in the consideration, and we have attached polling that we've, that we've done in advance to talk about that location, but that's, this is not carbon stone, and it doesn't become carbon stone until a town council approves the initial stages of the design, and at that point in time, you're going to want to know the location. So I think you will list out the most appropriate locations, and I would hope that the future council will select the one that makes the most sense.
Personally, I agree. I think the monastery is probably the best location, but we all know that the monastery in Cumberland is sacred ground, and I think that the voters would want to know where, prior to them voting. I'm speculating, but I think the project would have a greater chance of success if they knew it was not going to be at the monastery.
Well, that's not what our data showed, though, Counselor. You know, when you read your data, you're going to see that it didn't impact the tax rate, and of course, it was a pool of four hundred, which is plus or minus three, three to five percent. It showed in that poll, the only valid data that we have, that sixty percent of the town saw, and we asked a specific question when you actually look at it, if would you approve a monastery, the use of a monastery property that would be located across from the post office on Diamond Hill Road? So I think that when we talk about monastery, it's important that the public hears that this land is across from Dave's Market, not, not attached to the library or the senior center. So when we asked that question, and we made sure we asked that specifically because of potential pushback on it, that an overwhelming majority of the people thought it was good. But at the same point, I think that the vote should be based on, is there a need? And if there is a need, I believe that we can defend that for a positive vote, and that at that point in time, it's going to be up to another administration and a council to determine which location it's on.
Okay.
I should also note, Counselor, if I may, that this is not a part, part of the monastery that is used, other than people walking in.
One more, pardon.
Secondly, when it was purchased, it was purchased primarily to build a new town hall. So it was purchased for municipal purposes. I'm not aware of this, there may be some restrictions in the, what do they call it, the master plan?
We, we have researched. It's researched, and it is a, it is a allowable use, but again, I really want to reinforce to anybody who's listening and who reported, that this vote tonight is to put on the ballot the question to fund a public safety building, and it's not on there, and I am not shying away from the fact that I think that the, the very best location that, that's on the table today is in that space for a number of reasons which we can defend, but that doesn't mean that necessarily goes there. And I think that it's important that everybody understands that. That decision's going to be made down the line. And also, to a question that was asked earlier at the last meeting by Counselor DeCosta, this in no way obligates anybody to move the, the town hall or municipal building, or school offices for that matter. This is for strictly for a public safety building, the, you know, future, hopefully, John Partington, you know, public safety building.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hopper?
Keep in mind, when you think of the monastery restrictions, the more restrictive of those are attached to the property that initially was given to the town by the, by the monks, and you have-
Wasn't given, it was sold.
Well, whatever. You have, you have several different parcels. This one is not, if there are restrictions, it's not restrictions that everyone always thinks of. And as the mayor said, this, this is north of the monastery grounds, it's across-
Also, the, you know, there aren't many central locations that we own property in, and this one is in a commercial area. There's, there's a couple of residence areas, like adjacent to the post office, but primarily it's commercial. Counselor Schmidt, proceed.
Article seventeen thirteen of our charter indicates that a building committee should be established. Does that happen, or when does that happen?
That would happen with the, at the same time as the council voting on a proposal.
So assuming it approved tonight?
I believe that would be case, Mayor.
I think it would be based on the approval, anytime after the approval of the bond, because up to that point, it's premature. So once the bond is approved, and there's a commitment to move forward, which I think there would be, I, I would suggest the fact that the committee get to put, be put together sometime in November or December, so that activity could happen on that.
And, and they could even be, participate in the design if they, if we, if we found that to be the case. Counselor Schmidt, proceed.
All right, this is my last one. It's almost questions for myself. I made some notes. You know, is this too much information for us or for me to digest with too little time to think about it? I mean, we got this on yesterday. Are we rushing this decision?
Well, I mean, I mean-
We're not making a decision, first of all, the voters are.
I understand, but-
But we're authorizing the placement of a question on a ballot, and it's not the first time it's been discussed, Counselor.
Mr. President?
I, I like this, I think that it's important to lay out the, the sequence of events here, and over what period of time a previous council and this council has discussed this. And again, it's up to the council to decide whether he has had enough time, but this is, was started to be discussed back in probably two thousand and twelve, in the summer of two thousand and twelve. A polling was done in the spring of two thousand and thirteen, each time the town council was, you know, was made aware of it. I believe that there's been articles in the newspaper, probably at least a half a dozen times on this, on this proposal. The public has had a really ample time to, to, you know, to weigh in. And then most recently, we've been in front of the finance committee with this, because we wanted to keep the town council very informed, so when we got to this point, questions that could have been asked during that period of time have been answered. And then just recently, both Counselor Dwyer and Counselor Murray put out an information discussion just in the last meeting in May, where we again went over that to the degree that we were able to, and now tonight is the formal process. So this is not the first session on that, but again, that's, that's up to each council to determine if they have enough information.
I think-
We've tried to give ample time and knowing that we've come to this point, consistent information on this over the last close to two, close to two years.
I just want, I want to be clear, and I think there's an absolute need to do this. The question would be when? That's, that's what I'm grappling with.
Well, if we don't do it at the regular election, we'd have to have a special election, and there are costs involved in that. I, I don't think it's that complicated an issue. We're just asking for a ballot question, be placed on the ballot at this point in time.
No, I understand that, but if me, if I vote yes for this, then I've got to anticipate that I'll be asked a number of questions, and I, I'd like to be able to answer them in a reasonable manner.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Anybody else? Counselor Murray?
No.
Anybody else?
Mr. President, I would like to-
The class.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to echo some of the sentiments from Counselor Schmidt and also Counselor Murray. There's no question the building is needed. There's some reservations about location and map integration of the fire department, which I hope that at the appropriate time, once the commission is formed, and we have one entity to talk to, that can be accomplished. So all three departments, all three areas of safety in town are housed under one roof, close communications to each other. So I hope that that effort moves forward once the new fire commission is formed and we have someone to, to deal with. Clarification, today we're voting on authorization to place the question on the ballot only, like not authorizing anything else.
You don't have any authority to do anything else unless the voters say that you do?
Similar to what happened up at the high school, when they did the two thousand and ten plan. I would also point out that in terms of the fire departments, we have currently four, and only one of them really would be moving into this space, I believe, because of time issues.
Yeah, and that's a decision that-
And it probably would become one.
The new, yeah, but the new board is going to make that decision. And they can decide whether they expand the footprint, contract it, or keep it the same. That's going to be their decision, and that's why they're going to get elected to do that.
And I believe their, their charter gives them bonding, too. They'd have to do their own bond.
It may not be physically having fire, I mean, there's a lot of variables that could be-
You could also add on to the bill.
It may be just the executive offices, you know, maybe just the executive staff that comes in, the public safety staff. I mean, there's a lot of variables, and we're going to open every door possible to accommodate the fire districts. We see them as part of the town, and we'll offer, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that that's available, at least during the time I'm sitting here.
Because you will be mayor through January.
Please?
You will be mayor through January.
That's true.
Counselor, Almari?
It's January, January first or December?
It's the first Sunday in January.
Okay, just checking.
But I am going to snow before then.
I hope it's not on New Year's Day.
God bless.
One second.
Just to point out, part of this movement, I believe, of, of the design of this building is also going to afford the community to use, what do you want to call it, conference rooms or something like that? Is that correct?
Be a community room.
Right.
For our- yes.
And I, I think what's important in that is that even if we use other places, we're under time constraints a lot of times. I know, like at the library, they don't throw you out, but you're under a constraint, where I would assume that this type of setup is always open twenty-four seven, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to point that out.
Representative McLaughlin, you have a question? Come up, please. Can you give the rep one of those presentations? And give him three.
Thank you.
Give him three if you have them.
And, and, and I may have those that are going to go with each assembly member.
Well, they might not get them before.
Please?
They may not get them before.
That's right, we're going to handle it on this behalf.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to handle it on this behalf.
Do you have any other copies? Because I'd like Representative-
I can, I can have-
Boy, you won't get a color copy, though. Won't be as pretty.
Well, then, for you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The questions I have, the area of concern, too, I, I realize this is just a resolution that's going, going forth, but I, I would like this council to, to really consider this. The, and if it gets approved, you know, by the voters, and by the way, this is November, and working with Senator Pierce, and I remember going back for my amendments, if we would have had a special election in two thousand and thirteen-
This is a, this is a different, it's very much different.
I know, but one of my amendments was to change it to the November election, saving the town probably thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That was incorporated in the fire merger, but that's-
And that was also a concern that Representative Macbeth raised, and we accommodated her wishes on that, and, you know, we gave plenty of time, I think, so that turned out okay, it did, you know, we got it passed, which you said is important, but this is a bond bill.
I know.
My area, this isn't even drafted by alleged counsel.
A little food for thought here, though, to the demographics of the, the insurer for the fire districts, okay?
The who?
You, you have an insurance group, a fire group that actually works at the fire districts, okay?
Oh.
You know, they write up these, right? They write up the insurance.
Right.
And the placement of this is critical, when I say that, because I can remember, oof, probably back in two thousand and four. Because I can remember, oof, probably back in 2004, all right, where they did a study, an analysis, and they actually said, you know, we needed another fire district.
I think there's something in the Jacobs report that addresses that.
Yeah, so I would look at that.
It's a premature, you know, question.
It's premature, but it's something to take into consideration in the future, because they also look at that.
Well, that while you're here, I know you said you'd do your best. I understand the meeting was short notice, and I appreciate you coming. And if you could relay to Representative Macbeth and Ackerman. But, you know, whatever can be done. You don't have to put in a new bill, as you know. We just need one bill.
Yeah, but the Senate version.
The Senate bill has been introduced yesterday, and hopefully, we can get this done. If we can't, then we'll have to come up with Plan B if there is-
Well, we'll do our best. I can't promise anything, but we'll do our due diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks.
Counselor Murray?
I'd like to make a motion at this point to, on our 1425, the resolution to go forward.
Counselor Murray moves to approve resolution R 1425, seconded by Counselor Kearns. Is there any discussion? Anybody want a roll call?
Sure.
Roll call, vote. Counselor Dwyer?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor DeCosta?
Yes.
Counselor Kearns?
Yes.
Counselor Schmidt?
No.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries six to, five to one. Next item is resolution 1426, memorializing the General Assembly to enact legislation authorizing the town of Cumberland with the approval of the qualified electors to issue general obligation bonds in our notes in an amount not to exceed 2.5 million dollars for the repair rehabilitation of road infrastructure in the town. Mayor?
Mr. Speaker, the reason for this on the ballot is, is this is just a, to have the ability to continue to make road improvements in town. The last time the bond was passed was, I believe, in probably 2003 or so, something like that. Again, the timing of the bond becomes a function of the ability to pay. I'd like to have Brian just kind of overview here, again, for the record, our reasoning in terms of the timing. And also, I'd like to have Brian, we did give a call today, and I wanted to refer it from the state, that puts back on the table that loan that we had applied for a few months back, that we thought was dead, but I want Brian to kind of give you an idea that that's alive again. And I had talked to Counselor DeCosta about that earlier this evening. He got that for the forest, forest dive. And so that's alive, and I think that that's important. So Brian, maybe I'll just go over the bond ability, finances over two or three minutes, and then also speak to the conversation you had with the state today on the resurrection of that loan possibility.
Sure. On the 2.5 million dollar bond, again, very conservative estimates, we're using a five percent rate. Payments for this one would begin in fiscal year 16. And you're looking at annual payments of varying from year to year, but roughly about 200,000. I mean, some going as low as 198, as high as 203, so in the area of 200,000 dollars a year. And again, this would be layered in, we have some debt retiring, and that would be layering in beginning next year.
We've had previous road construction bonds, is that correct?
Yes.
How much do we have in the current account geared towards road construction?
Zero.
Zero.
In the bond, in the bond.
Please?
In the motion, we said the last bond that we used is- Yes, we changed that entirely.
And so there's no current debt service for road repair in the budget, because there's no money? I assume it's-
Well, there's budget lines in the highway department for just normal maintenance and repair, but there's nothing in there for, you know-
Well, I shouldn't assume there's no debt service, because it's possible money could be spent right away, and the debt would continue. Are you aware of any debt service for the last road bond in the budget?
I don't believe so. I don't-
I believe that there is, because that would have been a 15, 20-year bond that would have came out in 2004. But as we're saying, we're making the calculations based on the debt service that is retiring and that this is a, would be a priority that you allocate that debt service as retirement to us. The balance in 2004?
There was 2004 and 2011, yes. Maturity date of one-
Now, this is authorizing the borrowing. It's not actually, it's authorizing the town to give them the opportunity to borrow.
Just so.
It's not authorizing the actual borrowing.
The voters will decide then.
Thanks. Questions, Counselor Schmidt?
Have we prioritized a list of road improvements?
No, and that's, you're normally not doing that in advance for bond, but we know that there's, you know, those two and a half million dollars of work that can be done, and, you know, just to stay on pace for that.
It doesn't go very far. I mean, last night, we heard that the state spends a half a billion dollars on roads, and we can see the condition of them. Yeah. I was there till 12:45, like you.
What's that?
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? President of the Council? Counselor Kearns moves to approve, seconded by Counselor Murray. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, passes seven, six, nothing. Thanks.
I need to speak to, as the mayor mentioned, the road and bridge loan program.
Oh, okay. Well, we're not agreeing to it, so.
What's that?
Dieh, continue the journey.
The, when it was awarded previously, I believe it was the town right in front of us, which was Tucket. Between, there were three or four towns ahead of us, and the money that the state had allocated was used up by the, all the towns before us. The state has since allocated more funds, over 3 million dollars, I think, I believe I heard it was 3.3 million more to the loan program. And I was contacted today by Clean Water Finance that Cumberland has now been approved for the loan program.
Good.
Right now, we have authorization for 200,000, as that's what was approved by the council. The legislation that was passed stated it no longer needs voter approval for this program. So we can, we can either move ahead with what was presented or what was approved by the council, or we can bring it back and do the full request, which was, I believe, between 500 and 600,000 dollars.
What is the interest rate on that?
Uh, one.
It would be about one-third less than the going rate. That's how-
So it's less than the bond rate?
That's correct.
Sounds like a no-brainer, but hey. All right, we have, it's been approved, so thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Thank you, Mr. Director and Chief. Counselor Kearns moves to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Murray. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Goes against, passes six, nothing. The meeting is adjourned at 6:32.